Oh, yeah, that would need. But that building on 41, that's hardly ever used. We could send in people out to clean it and do the toilets. You know, okay. 19141, there's a building right here. It's Holder.
Oh, isn't that where they do meals on wheels at us? I don't think so. I don't know. I'm not sure. Okay.
Good afternoon and welcome. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting this fine day of January 21st, 2025. Thank you all for coming out, and we are going to start off with the invocation led by Pastor Danny Slater from the First Christian Church of Inverness. If you could rise, please stand with us.
Let's join in prayer together, shall we? Father, we praise your name for this wonderful, beautiful day. As we enter into this first time together, this wonderful new year you've given us, we also recognize that in light of the situations of this week, we embark on a brand-new chapter in all of our lives. And Father, we are reminded from your word, mainly from Solomon, of his lack of confidence in himself and seeking your wisdom, where he says, "Who has the wisdom to govern your people?" Father, with that, Father, we trust in your lordship in our lives. We seek your direction through your word in the scriptures. And we are inspired by the Holy Spirit that you've given us. Father, may you be number one in everything that we do and say here on this day and as we move forward. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for all those who have come, inspired with new direction and new love and care for this amazing community. It is to your glory and honor that we pray. Amen.
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 Let us be led in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please do the honor of the row call?
This is a regular meeting at the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This is 21st day of January 2025. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bays, First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Janet Barrett, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Holly Davis, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond.
Thank you. Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Approval of the agenda with additions or deletions?
Yes, I have a few items. Additional item B1, proclamation to recognize February 7th, 2025 as Major John K. McGee Day in Citrus County, Florida. Also, pull item C3. This has been rescheduled on the February 11th, 2025, BOCC meeting. Also, additional information for E9 MAP was added to the City of Inverness legislative priorities. And also, additional item I2 Aviation Advisory Board correspondence from applicant. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any board comment? Is all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next on our agenda today is proclamations.
Madam Chair, it is with great honor that I ask for you to approve B1, naming February 7th, 2025 as Major John K. McGee Day in Citrus County, Florida.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further comments by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Please join me in the front. All those representing Major John K. McGee Day, if you could please come forward. Whereas Army Ranger Major John McGee served our nation over a span of five decades in eight countries and served on active duty during every armed conflict since the Vietnam War. Early in service, Major McGee served as an enlisted combat soldier in Vietnam with the 25th Infantry Division as a long-range reconnaissance patrol member. He was later commissioned through Officer Candidate School and became a helicopter pilot. He retired with many awards and medals, including two bronze... Sorry. Including two Bronze Stars and a Medal for his service combating the global war on terrorism. And whereas after proudly serving our country, Major John McGee selflessly dedicated his time to better his community by volunteering and helping others. He is currently the Vice President of the Citrus County Veterans Foundation, a unit director with the 75th Ranger Regiment Association, a member of the Veterans Appreciation Week Ad Hoc Committee, past commander of VFW Post 10087, past commander of the Disabled American Veterans Chapter 70, a member of the Advisory Committee for Congressman Bill Belaracus, and board member for Operation Welcome Home. And whereas in 2024, the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame Board of Directors, with the review and approval of Governor Ron DeSantis and the Florida Cabinet, chose Major John McGee to be inducted into the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame on February 7th, 2025. And whereas, the nomination for John, Major John McGee, was supported by Congressman Bill Gaspillaracus, Senator Blazing Golglia, Representative Ralph Masulo, Commissioner Diana Finnegan, and citizens from our community. And whereas the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners would like to recognize the induction of Major John K. McGee into the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame and thank him for his service to our country and to our community. And now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby recognize February 7th, 2025 as Major John K. McGee Day in Citrus County, Florida, and we call this observance to his attention of all our citizens. Executed this 21st day of January 2025. Can the veterans come up and get a picture with John and our representatives from the offices that help support this? All veterans, come on up. The veterans. His lovely wife Fawn also retired already. We still got more time. Okay, squeezing in.
Commissioners, my name is Mike Belkin, and I'm here representing the All Veterans Honor Guard for Citrus County. I was in the 25th Infantry Division along with John McGee. We were at the same location, same time, same area. We were a lot younger back then, and we probably passed each other. I saluted him because I was just a little nothing at the time. Now I'm a big nothing, but John, I'm very proud to know is a longtime friend. John was a LERP, which is Long Range Reconnaissance Patrol, which anybody in the military knows, that's a very, very dangerous job. He survived, and he was also a helicopter pilot. And I have this from July of 1968. And if you look real close, you could see John piloting a helicopter. Thank you for your service, John.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Peter Tan. I'm the civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army. After serving 36 years in the Army, I was chosen by the 25th Secretary of the Army, Christine Warmuth, to represent this area of Florida and also have some force-multiplying efforts nationally. But one veteran that I did recognize early in my stay here in Florida was John McGee. And John was the first one to have an encouraging word, having a smiling welcome, and always wanted to do everything he could for the veterans of this county and with some penetrating effort, second, third order effects around Florida itself. So, on behalf of the Secretary of the Army, I wanted to extend her best wishes and provide you with a coin of appreciation from me and her.
I want to thank everybody for coming. I'm extremely humbled by all of this. I want to say one thing about Citrus County and the veterans in Citrus County and for all the county commissioners and the county staff. The veteran service officers we have in this county probably do more for our veterans than a lot of counties in Florida and a lot of counties across the United States. And he's my friend, but let me tell you, Phil Watson does one hell of a job. So, Citrus County takes care of its veterans. There's a lot of veterans in this county. And I couldn't be happier to have retired here 22 years ago. So, thank you very much, Fall, for coming, and thank you for everything.
I'd like to thank all the veterans for their service to our country, and I think we're honored and blessed to have so many that live here in Citrus County. I feel safe. All right, let's see. I'm gonna go a little bit off-script here because we've got absolutely two minutes. Otherwise, we would have opened to the public, but let's go ahead and do our consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety, which I believe deleted C3.
Second.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Barrett. Is there any board comment? Seeing none. All those in favor.
We have public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are 114. Let's go ahead and go to H1. By the time they get up here, they're gonna, we're gonna be right there. It's a presentation by the Citrus County Detention Facility, Corps of Vic update. Chair, as they're moving up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Snow, Warden, Citrus County Detention Facility. Update for this month, we are continuing to strive to fill our vacancies in our posts in efforts to do that. Just so you're aware, we got 14 that we just sent to the WTC Academy. That puts all but one of our staff members to be fully certified as far as TEAs to correctional officers, so we're making great strides there. We have 40 offers out for our next class, which starts next week. So, we're hoping to have a great turnout for that with those 40 offers. I just, one thing I wanted to share with you as a closeout from last year is a lot of our turnover is first-year turnover. And we put a lot of emphasis on reduction of that turnover. And that percentage is usually about 70% of our turnover. Our facility goal was exceeded by 25% for reduction in first-year turnover. So, that was a huge success for us as a facility as we continue to move forward and change the culture and retain our staff. So, one of the things that stood out to me last time we were up here and you asked, you know, what are we doing about getting above a certain percentage? I went back and we crunched the numbers. Currently, on a trend, we are 48% with additional posts. And in those additional posts, I think I mentioned a little bit last month about it, was, you know, med runs, additional transports, constant watches that are affecting our numbers, the percentages that you all see. So, if you were to compare that 48% and even out the percentages, like I pulled November, for instance, we're consistently in the high 80s and 90% with staffing in the facility, which is a huge positive compared to where we were six months ago. Again, still not where we need to be. Many of those days, I think upwards of nine or 10 of those days, we are actually over 100% capacity on staffing if you take away those additional challenges that we have to face in the facility. So, that's currently where we're at. Any questions?
Board members? Commissioner Finnegan.
Warden Snay, thank you for the presentation. You had announced last year that you would be moving back to your home state. I was wondering how long do we get to keep you? And what is the, is Corps of Vic doing as far as getting a replacement for you quickly?
So, we should be seeing a closeout this week of the final offer on my position. We did fill AW position. That person is supposed to be here between February 2nd and February 16th. But as far as my position goes, they were supposed to give final approval today at the board and then make the final offer to the candidate. And from what I understand, it's gonna be a good one, so it'll be good. And hopefully, you can take where I've left off and just keep running in the right direction where we need to be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, I think we're done with you. I think maybe, you know, we have public here and we have public that listens, and I think it might be wise to give them some level of comfort when they hear about these post positions. Can you kind of fill in the blanks there and what that looks like? And it's so it doesn't feel like there's a safety issue.
Can Joe, is Joe in the audience? Let's bring Joe up. Joe's actually the subject matter expert. Although I had a little bit of, I had about 3,000 inmates when I was Sheriff Judd doing administration, but I'm not a corrections officer. So, that's why we brought Joe on board as a subject matter expert to help us. And just like the warden said, I had good discussions with Corps of Vic last week about this potential new hire. And I think they have some good credentials, and they're within the state of Florida. But with that, maybe, Joe, you could explain that a little bit, be helpful.
Right. The person they're looking to onboard is a former warden with Florida State DOC, coming out of the Miami area. As soon as they, I guess, work out the particulars, he's gonna relocate to Citrus County and assume the leadership of the facility. You were talking about the posts. There are, they've had some really great days, and then they've had some really tough days when they end up with five, six hospitals going out of the facility. They're pulling from these post positions. And I think the warden, and they are critical positions. Some of them, the laundry officer, you know, not the property officer, aren't critical to the running of the facility. And they're the first ones that go when they send somebody out on a run. But they've been sending out, like I said, last week they had about five or six go out at one time. So, you're pulling 12 officers. You're calling people in on their days off. Can you come in, you know, pick up this run? So, they've held the line pretty good so far. You know, and as long as the warden's gonna get 40 more to onboard, once you get them in and get trained, and then you'll get this academy class back. They have been trending upwards as far as their numbers go. They, you know, like I said, they have a really great day. They'll be kicking out 85 to 90% staffed, and then the next day, there's six hospitals, and now you're down at 60% staffed. And I think the warden, when he was talking about his staffing numbers, is based on a percentage of, was that post worked at some point during the day? And, you know, they're amortizing it over the period of the month, saying, oh, this post has been staffed X number of, you know, hours a day. And I think at some point, we're gonna have to sit down and take a hard look at how we're gonna analyze all the numbers. And is it gonna be based on a percentage of the day worked? Is it gonna be, is it open, closed regardless? And we're gonna have to take a look at that, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna say also, the discussion we had with them last week, they've authorized to hire at 125%
Yes.
with the hope of getting more in. So, that's something else that they've done at the executive level, authorized a warden.
They're over-hiring.
Over-hiring.
Just, you know, to account for attrition.
Appreciate your update. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. At this time, we're gonna go to open to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time? Please fill out a green card and hand it to the clerk, and you have three minutes to speak. And if you are registered as a group, you will have five minutes to speak. And please direct all comments to the chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Carmen Kubitschak, 4512 East Maryland Street. I'm here to again ask about a response from the FDLE. December the 12th of last year, I reached out to the Governor's Office. A pleasant young man, Mr. Shawn, called me back. We had a long discussion about what happened here in IV4, how the county commissioners are handling this, as well as the administrator and the staff. He assured me that he would have someone call me back with a response, because I told him FDLE has had a letter from Commissioner Davis now for a year in February. I never got a response, so I reached out again, left a voicemail. And Caitlin, from the Governor's Office, I believe she called at Citizen Service, left me a voicemail, because I missed her call, directing me to go to Legal Aid and left a number. I looked up Legal Aid, what does it take to get representation? And you have to be, I believe, is 125% above the poverty level, which really excludes, I want to say, a good percentage of IV4. And we just don't have the resources to seek legal, you know, counsel or attorney. This board in the past has told us the same thing. Everyone on this board, for the exception of Barrick, because she was in present at the time, I've been at this now for three years, has told me the same thing, that we should seek an attorney. The way I see it is that everyone, including the commissioners, past and present, the administrator, the staff, and your attorney have had, have put us in the situation we are in now. Either because you lack information, your staff may not be telling you the whole truth, your attorney may not be advising you appropriately. We have a problem here. I noticed today that, you know, and in the past, that you really advocate for the veterans of this county. We have veterans living in our community. Who's advocating for them? I'm asking you again to reach out to the AG before she leaves office, because I don't see her doing anything. I hate to see what she's gonna do when she gets to the Senate. But something needs to be done. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to address the public?
Good afternoon. John Labriola from Inverness. I'll just take the three minutes. My name's John Labriola. I live in Inverness. And I'm here because at a future meeting on February 11th, you'll be meeting as the Library Governing Board, and you will be appointing a member to the Library, four members to the Library Advisory Board. And I don't know for sure if I'll be there, so I wanted to let you know that I had put in my application, and I would like to ask for your vote. So, a little background about myself. I've lived here in Citrus County for the last several years, and I've been very active in improving the library system. One of the things I did was to lead the charge to cancel the LGBT pride displays in the libraries, which I think was a very positive addition to the libraries. In addition to that, the following year, or the following two years, I worked to get the county out of the ALA to cancel the county's membership in the American Library Association, which, as you know, had controversy because of the president, who I believe is still president, is a Marxist lesbian, and she's proudly proclaimed to be a Marxist lesbian and has really radicalized that organization to push drag queen story hours and that kind of thing. So, I actually led the charge to cancel the county's membership in the ALA. And since that time, there, I was a participant in the process to remove the book Jack of Hearts, which Council, I mean, Commissioner Diana Finnegan brought up at a recent meeting, actually a few months ago, to alert the public to the fact that there were pornographic books in our library that did not belong there and did not belong in the children's section. So, I was part of that process to remove the book Jack of Hearts. And I would like to be on the Library Advisory Board, because I feel like last year, there was a missed opportunity to cut some funding. And I believe that we do need a strong and effective library system, but also that we need to look for ways to save some money. And one way we can save money is to reduce the amount of books that we're purchasing every month. We purchase approximately 1,300 books per month, spend an awful lot of money on that. And a lot of them are just not getting vetted, which is why we ended up with the pornographic book in the children's section last year. So, I would really respectfully request that you nominate me when the nomination comes up on February 11th and you're sitting as the Library Advisory Board, I mean, sorry, Library Governing Board. So, in addition to that, I just want to say that this is the second day of the Trump presidency. And Trump feels very strongly that we should get out of the transgender nonsense that we've been in. A lot of the books do have that theme of transgenderism. And we've canceled all the DEI, all the transgender programs that the federal government had under Biden's orders. And I think that we, as a county, should follow that direction as well and remove the transgender books and that kind of thing from the library. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wanting to speak to open to the public? Hello?
Good morning. Deb Spence, Crystal River. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but let me start with my commendations to Commissioner Bayes for the way that these meetings are being run. I know that it's not easy sometimes. This board seems to be like herding cats sometimes. You think you're all going down the same line, and then one goes to the right, one goes to the left, and it's hard to bring them all back together again. But thank you very much for your management style here. It's appreciated. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but because the previous speaker was here, talking about everything that he has done negatively for this county. You know, let's do away with this, let's do away with that. But there's nothing proactive, nothing to build to make us a better community. And I'd strongly suggest that you not endorse him at all for the library position. We need someone who actually supports reading, doing reading groups. We have a marvelous children's librarian who knows the kids. If you walk in there for some of the classes, the kids are jumping and running and reading. And what is wrong with kids reading books? We need more of that, not taking away possibilities. As far as the president being elected, there is a new fear of bullying in this county that I will alert you to. It's coming out on Facebook loud, and it's not a good look for this county at all. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ron Thor, and I am the President of the Windermere Garden Villas HOA, located in the city of Inverness. I'm gonna speak to you today about item E9 on the agenda. We have two entrances to the community. One is from Turner Camp Road, and the other one is from Railroad Street. They serve our approximately 260 residents, who are not only taxpayers, but who pay attention to the issues and vote accordingly. The issue today that I bring to you is the letter of support the commissioners are being asked to provide to the city of Inverness in support of extending Railroad Street. The extension of Railroad Street raises many concerns and questions. Number one, what about the increase in traffic? Windermere first started being developed in 1989. So, this would be a huge change to the community. Number two, they talk about addressing the stacking of cars for school pickup on Turner Camp. And that is a problem. But that's the school district's problem, not the taxpayers of Inverness and the county. It would be real easy for them to create a bullpen between Route 41 and the school. There's many methods to be able to take care of it. Three, there are already five cut-through streets in the area we're talking about that go straight out to Route 41. They talk about affordable housing. We all are at a loss. Where is this affordable housing going to go? Where is the necessity for this? Five, talk about the evacuation, because Turner Camp dead ends into the, with Lakouchi. That is true. But as people would come this way to evacuate in that situation, there's Jasmine Street. Railroad Street is eight tenths of a mile further. You mean to tell me, in a time of evacuation, you're gonna ask people to drive eight tenths of a mile further to facilitate the evacuation? And lastly, our real concern is, what's the rush? We just became aware of this recently, and it just seems like there's such a rush to get this done. So, that's the big, big question. So, we, the community of Windermere Garden Villas, and I might add Arbor Trails Nursing Home, I've talked to Dan Jones at length, the administrator. We respectfully ask that support for the extension of Railroad Street be put on hold till all parties have had a chance to make their concerns known. We ask that the board today not approve or authorize a letter of support from the city of Inverness for the extension of Railroad Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Stephen Santa Fe, and I've lived in the Inverness Highlands for 35 years now. Retired from teaching at the Crest School and raised three children in this county. I'm here to address the chipping away of one of our Citrus County's gems, Whispering Pines Park. Specifically, the clear-cutting to build an RV park. Myself, family, friends, and my students I have taught have consistently used all the amenities at the park that the park has to offer. I understand the reasoning that they have been doing this. I am a camper and have traveled to many of my children's sports in different counties and found parks to camp at nearby. There are campgrounds nearby here, Holder Mines, Mutual Mines, Tillis Hills, Pots Preserve, Thousand Palms, and there are many new ones that are coming popping up all over the county. Part of the permanent trail has already been paved by making you walk along the highway. Remember, you can only walk your dogs on the permanent trail. So, that means that you're gonna be walking your dogs on the hot pavement by the highway or dodging RVs. And the drainage from that road has already seems to be a problem up there, if you notice, if you're up there. County needs to consider the destruction of wildlife habitat and increased traffic congestion and the significant loss of the recreational opportunities for our residents and visitors. I'm asking you to please consider Whispering Pines Park and to keep it the gem that it is. Thank you.
Thank you for comments.
Hello. I'm speaking on agenda item E9. My name is Alan Lewis. I'm a resident of Windermere, a community which abuts Railroad Avenue. I'm a retired architect, and I practiced in both commercial and residential architecture in Florida for 30 years. As a consequence, I'm somewhat familiar with the zoning process. I fully understand that Railroad Street is not being rezoned. However, the county is being asked to consider changing a dead-end street into a through street. Though not being a zoning change, this shares a characteristic of a zoning change in that the values of some of the properties adjoining Railroad Street may be affected. The value of some properties may be reduced, while the values of other adjoining properties may be increased. I therefore request that the county commissioners require that the city of Inverness have an impact study performed by an independent third party to determine how the values of adjoining properties may be affected. In addition, I would request that the county commissioners require that the city of Inverness advise in writing all the owners of all properties adjoining Railroad Street so that the owners may express their opinions. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello.
Hello.
My name, my name is Richard Fawcett. I live in Windermere subdivision, and I am passionate about Inverness and particularly the With Lakouchi Trail. I spend at least two hours on the trail every day. First hour, I let my dogs walk me. The second hour, I'm usually on a trike with a little motor on it to help me when I get really whipped. And I noticed in your mission statement, the health, safety, and well-being of its citizens. That's just beaches. That's great. I can't imagine any more enticing and exciting wording. Unfortunately, the extension of Railroad Street is going to have the opposite and already has had the opposite effect on residents of Windermere and, more importantly perhaps, users of the trail. Yesterday, I decided when I walked underneath the 41 overpass that I would walk out the two alleyways or two connectors that are supposed to go around and alleviate going under the bridge eventually. The beauty of the trail, the serenity disappeared. As soon as I walked up with my dogs to the top of the hill and looked at and heard all of the traffic that was coming, it was like a culture shock. I couldn't imagine attempting to take my dogs, even on their leashes, and try to walk another quarter of a mile to the stoplight and cross over and then come back the other way and get back on the trail in a safely and appropriate manner. I see every day, every weekend, I run into people who are visiting and using the trail. When that, if that ever happens, you're gonna eliminate a huge number of people who simply will not put up with having to make that circuitous and insane detour to get on the trail. Thank you. Please don't allow this to happen. Don't encourage it to happen. If you haven't been on the trail at that, where that overpass is and seen what is anticipated, you need to do it for yourself. It'll be a beautiful walk for a 10 minutes, and then it'll be a nightmare for the next 10 minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, we're gonna close open to the public and move on to regular business.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve E1, A and B?
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further board comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All, motion carries 5-0.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E2.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E2.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Any further board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E3.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, is there any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E4A, B, and C.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further board comment?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrick.
Okay, having read through what we were giving them back up, I really don't like a 50-year lease, number one, especially when it's for $0. We usually give five-year leases to our nonprofits, and it's usually a dollar a year. And then at the end of five years, we look at it again. I really feel that, you know, this should be changed in the contract. It's just a nominal fee, but it is five years and five years and five years rather than one 50-year fee and one zero fee for those 50 years.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Canard.
I could not disagree with you more strongly. It's a great organization. Unfortunately, tremendous need in our community for them, and the stability of the long-term lease is needed for the organization and for the citizens, or the residents that we serve.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barrick.
Well, that's where we disagree. I do agree, it's a wonderful organization, okay? And we've had other wonderful organizations, but over time, sometimes wonderful organizations tend to change. That's why we don't do 50-year leases. We do five years and five years. And if there's such a wonderful organization, a dollar a year rent is not too much to ask to rent a building from the county.
Madam Chair. Can I make one comment first? Commissioner Barrick, I understand what you're saying. I'll give you a dollar if it makes you feel better, but on the second note of that, Jesse's Place, they have gone out between the community and themselves through the state and wherever they've gotten their funds. They have funded and built everything that's out there. We do nothing. We have no investment in it other than our piece of property. That's the only investment, and they're getting ready. They have an appropriation request into the state now. Because it is so needed and so overwhelming to add on to it, this program is in other counties as well, and they're building, it ran very similar to the same way as this You can't ask the community and the legislature to make investments in buildings and then us micromanage it. I think they've done a good job. I can remember when this all came about because of a little girl that suffered her death, and this is probably one of the better programs that we have in our county. So I'm going to respectfully disagree with you. Commissioner Finnegan, you are recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to point out, if, you know, if Jesse's Place was just another nonprofit doing something good, maybe we could extend the conversation, but our job is for our citizens, the Health and Human Services. We protect our citizens, and we fund our Sheriff's Office. We have fire. We have EMS. We also have to protect our children. And I remember what our children went through as I worked with many of those children and adjacent to others. It was terrible. It was terrible for our very youngest citizens, and Jesse's Place came along and fixed that. It's our responsibility to make sure that Ms. Bauer Master and Jesse's Place is very, very successful. They are going to be going after some money from the state, and I think that that garners our support. And as Commissioner Bayes has pointed out, we need to show that we're behind it. Not only should we be behind it, because yes, it's a great organization, it's our responsibility to help protect these citizens at a very young age. So, good job, and I see this moving forward.
Commissioner Davis, you're recognized.
I just want to reiterate even more strongly that we, entities cannot fundraise either through grants or charitable donations. Large capital investment will not happen without long-term leases, period, full stop. No one's going to give a lot of money to an entity that has a five-year lease to expand the building that sits on land that we own. So they have to have a 50-year lease. Secondly, although I really appreciate the collegiality of Madam Chair saying that she'll give you the dollar a year, think about the attorney time and everything else where we're going to have to bring this back, and they're going to have to change it for, wait for it, a dollar a year for 50 years. So can we just let that one go, please?
Well said, Commissioner. Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barrick, you're recognized.
I didn't say that this was not a good cause. It is a good cause. What I'm saying is we're picking and choosing who we charge prices to and don't charge to, and in the past, they've talked about that. It's a building that's a county building. Even if we just rented it for 10 years to them rather than five, and then get the option for another 10. You know, it's one of those things where, I'm sorry, you know, we're picking and choosing, and that's not our job. Our job is to be responsible. So I see Jesse's Place is good, and I was here when everything happened. So I do know all about Jesse's Place and how it evolves, and it's a good cause.
Chair calls for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Carries 4-1.
Did you do public comment on that?
Oh, no, I guess I did. I got all caught up in that. Would you like any public comment?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Melissa Bauer Master, Executive Director of Jesse's Place. And just to clarify, certainly I appreciate all of the support from the county commissioners. But the intention behind the long-term lease, just for clarification, it is our intention at Jesse's Place to secure legislative funding to expand our building. We are out of space. We do not, we have three people sharing one office space. I have two therapy rooms having to lease additional space because we just, we need more room. So our intention is to expand the county-owned building on county property, adding about 150% of the existing square footage to that building. It has been the advice that I have gotten, not only from our state senator and representative, but also from the wisdom of this board, that that is not possible without a long-term lease. So the purpose behind that, the deviation from the standard, I guess, behavior or standard procedure, was to allow us that ability to go seek that funding. And ultimately, the county will have an asset that is expanded and improved in value in turn for the long-term lease. So that was the purpose behind it. But I do thank you for your support.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I know. I just didn't know if I needed to do it. Okay, perfect. All right, we're moving on to E5.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E5.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Barrick. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E6A and B.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E7.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E8A and B.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. E9, I know that we have some folks here from Inverness. Would you like to come forward and tell us what's, what you're asking for?
Good afternoon. How are you? Eric Williams, city manager, and we've got the Honorable Mayor Bob Placeded with us this afternoon. This is all new equipment. This is beautiful. What we're here this afternoon to talk to you all about is garnering cooperative support, not only for two specific projects outlined in our legislative priorities, which have been shared through your government liaison office, but also to share with you some of the bigger focal points that I think we share in general about local control, protection of the environment, statewide transportation networks, things of that nature. As it relates to the two projects, there's a couple of things that were said today that hopefully we can clear up for folks. Let me start with Whispering Pines. You know, for many years, those of who've been here a long time can remember all the back and forth about Whispering Pines in the city and the county. Let me share with all of you, neither the county nor the city owns Whispering Pines. It is a state-owned facility. That remained a silent point of conversation for decades. And why is that important now? It's important now because the county and the city came together in 2017 to start cooperatively funding that park. And it is a very expensive park to run. It is not, it's not inexpensive. It's a large facility. It's over 300 acres when you include the out parcels that go along with it. We are subject, as the lessie, to the state's management guidelines for that facility, meaning just like a state park or a state forest, we have a unit management plan that's been approved by the state for the management of that facility. It is a very expensive facility that today you all contribute a little less than half, which is fine, but at some point, the cost of that facility is going to exceed that contribution as well as the city's ability to continue to contribute from the general fund to run it into perpetuity. So we have, for the last number of years, begun a campaign to look at where can we generate revenue from that. It was largely decided that no one saw an interest in charging folks to go into that park on a daily basis as a user fee. We believe that would collapse the usership of the park, and people would quit using it. But it had been looked at, what opportunities could be from ball fields, sports tourism, bringing different events there, and we've done that. Should either of us, the city or the county, were to run that park and you no longer be able to, it will revert back to the ownership of the state. And I can share with you with all the confidence in the world, those of you who have visited many state parks, their cash generation philosophy out of those parks is a singular thing. It almost, majority, it's a campground. That's where they generate the amounts of their revenue needed to run those facilities largely comes from that. The city is looking, and it is already in the state's approved unit management plan for that facility, to put in a campground facility akin to what you have in state parks. This is not a resort. This is not a long-term stay-type facility. This is a state park-type campground that is being proposed. In talking with the state last year in our legislative priorities and the year prior, there is a good understanding that the park is in need of improvements. The state has brought over $1 million to the table to bring a new entrance to that park to alleviate traffic congestion and better access into the park, which is part of the Highway 41 north widening. So what we're here this afternoon to do is to garner your support, and if you recall, we were, 18 months ago came before the TDC in discussing this, and they asked us to come back at a time when we thought that this project was going to move forward in a more expedient fashion. So we're here today to tell you that we are submitting it as one of our legislative priorities, and because you all are co-funders of the park, you know, we would love to garner your support in asking them to cooperatively fund a campground in Whispering Pines. Now, to allay people's concerns about clear-cutting and things of that nature, the area that's being looked at is already a wide-open field that largely remains unused today. It is not something that we're looking to go in and have scorched earth and cut the trees down and make it into a RV resort. Again, this is a campground akin to what you would see, probably not even full hookup. It would be just water and electric with a singular dump station akin to what you see with the state parks. As it relates to that, I can answer any questions, but I wanted to make sure that we clarified what some of the things that are out there being discussed and bring clarity to that if you have any questions on just that piece of it.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Canard.
Eric, thanks for being here. Mayor, it's always good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you as well.
I see Gene was the wise one to sit back and back.
Yes, and we have the Assistant City Manager Frank Halshon, who you all probably all know as well.
I didn't see Frank back there.
And Councilman Davis.
Quick question for you. One, one question that, or one concern that was brought up to me about this was whether or not you're going to be losing or taking out one of the ball fields, one of the baseball fields or T-ball fields, and this particular individual was very concerned about that.
So this would encompass, if you're familiar with the park, the very back ball field, which is a very small portion of this large cleared area, it would encompass that entirety of that facility, yes. But that field is not lit today, and it does not have a lot of the play on it that you have on the others because they're lit and because they have the scoreboards. It is largely just a practice area.
I have a question.
You finished? Commissioner? Commissioner Barrick.
Okay, number one, how many sites are you going to have?
Well, we don't know the extremity, because we don't intend to go beyond what that space that's available there is, so I can't answer that, but I can give you a range if that would help. I would tell you, akin to a state park campground, you would see 50 to 75 sites tops, which is very small in the world of campgrounds.
All right, compared to the state park over in Dunellen? Would it compare to that, or would it be more aggressive? Have you been there?
It would be less intense than the one that you have at Rainbow Springs. Rainbow Springs is a full hookup site, but I will tell you that all state parks have the same guidelines in terms of length of stay, and that is the critical point in which you don't find yourself competing with private RV parks. Private RV parks make the bulk of their money in long-term stays. This facility would operate under the same guidelines as the state, is like you see in Dunellen at Rainbow Springs, so I think it's 14 days or less. We would not want to bring in full hookups for a number of reasons, but it would be more of a, they don't call it primitive, but they call it partial hookup, which is just water and electric, which is much less than what you have in Dunellen.
Okay, now, since it is state land and you're going to put the RVs, who collects the money?
The city would collect the money.
Even though it's a state park?
It's correct. We have a lease on that facility, and that facility lease has gone on since the '70s, and the county and the city have cooperatively funded it for a long time. There was a period of time where we didn't, but we do now, and in order to keep that facility at a certain level of expectation. It's aging, and it needs capital improvements. And I don't think that it's a good strategy for us to come back to, you all have your own set of parks and your own set of things that need improvement, to say, we need, we need more money. We need more money. I think the responsibility, just as you've done with your boat ramps, is look at where you can monetize the opportunity and then infuse that capital back and keep that visitor experience alive.
Well, I know I was here when the board and the, and the city discussed in great detail the amount of money that the board gives for the county park in Inverness. So, you know, I know it went back and forth and back and forth with a lot of aggravation in its direction.
I was driving the getaway car.
So, so the thing is, when you say we pay less than half of the cost, we probably do pay a lot less than half of the cost to run the park, because parks are not cheap.
They are not cheap.
Okay, I just want to make sure who's, you know, because you lease it, you can sub-lease to the campers.
It's not sublessing to them.
Well, it would be similar to that.
It would be. You all, I believe, own a campground, so you would generate revenue from that, okay? The same goes for, for us. We would have the campground, and we're able to generate revenue from it. And the theory is to not come back to you and say, well, we need more money, instead of looking at opportunities in keeping with the state's management plan to generate money from the park, keeping our local users without paying a cost to be in there every day. Because if, the only, the other options to monetize the park start to impact the locals.
Now, is this going to cost the board less money for our share of the park?
I wouldn't think right away, no, but it's definitely designed to not have you cost more money into the park.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan.
I don't know who's using or not using Eric, but I have played kickball and softball on that field. I can't, I'm trying to picture, it's been a while since I've been back on that field, but 50 to 75 sounds like a lot without clearing more area.
It's really not. You can put a lot of RV in campground spots in a very small area. It's pretty astonishing. I think your zoning code allows for up to 15 per acre.
You mentioned the county with the campground, and what I've learned from that is when you have that, somebody has to run that.
That's correct.
So it's not a big money generator. I do think it'll be... So it's not a big money generator. I do think it'll be lose a field. I think it's going to be a traffic generator. I don't know that it's going to be a huge money generator.
So I'll tell you the difference between what you all run and what this would be. You don't have a competing space already there with staff and things going on. Remember, Whispering Pines Park already has a full infrastructure of staff. It already has all the equipment. It already has all the electric run to it. It already has all the water and sewer. The day-to-day operations of most of your state park campgrounds are nearly a zero-sum game for the state because they use host volunteers. So it's a very inexpensive way to run a campground, actually.
For making money at the park, what about the pool and maybe the city doing something with concessions? Because I know that you, in the past, have put that to others.
So if you were to try and generate the forecasted numbers from this, it wouldn't come close. The pool and the concessions generate somewhere between $50,000 to $60,000 a year in total revenue. The total cost to run the pool is well beyond that each year. This, even in very conservative estimates, would generate $500-plus thousand dollars a year in cash flow.
Can you repeat the number, what you'd say, you said it would create in cash flow?
Probably close to half a million dollars a year. It's not, it isn't, if you think about taking 50 to 75 sites and you're charging $35 to $50 a night, over the course of these campgrounds stay at least 70 to 80% occupancy throughout the year. There is a reason why they keep coming to you all wanting to build more RV parks. They're amazing cash flow. They really are. And the ones that you can do long-term cash in, they're mega cash generators. That's why so many people are coming to you wanting them.
And I do fear about that mix of daily people. I mean, that park is so filled with not only the ball teams, you've got the little water park up there, the playground. As you go away from the ball fields, you know, the younger the kids are getting up that hill and families and I...
The park largely during the day is, has very few people in it. The times you see people in the park are for the ball games and for the specific activities, but absent that, the park is very sparsely used during, throughout the day. I mean, we run the traffic numbers in and out of there, and there are concentrations of it, but in large majority, the park is not used 24/7 that it's open. It's got very passive usership. And one of the other things that was brought up and I wanted to address is that we allow dogs throughout the entirety of the park. There is no restriction to just the perimeter trail, just for everyone's information.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Canard.
Eric, I know in the past, there's been discussion about, at some point, that the pool was going to need to be replaced there. Any idea of price tag that you, we, us would be looking at to do that?
I would tell you it's north of several million dollars for a commercial pool like that.
So, board, I think as much as probably none of us want to necessarily see RVs come into the park, I think it is realistic to say, we've got to figure out, as partners in this, we've got to figure out a way to fund these, these capital projects there. That's one project. None of us are going to want to see them come back here and say, we need, you know, pool replacements, $4 million or $3 million. We need $2 million from you guys.
Commissioner Finnegan.
That conversation's coming.
Why would we replace and not refurbish? It's a pool. It's a hole in the ground. I haven't heard anyone with their pools, like, completely replacing pools. You would refurbish a pool.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I know that, that probably a year and a half ago, maybe longer than that, I was involved in the conversation, not with either one of these two, that pool replacement is coming, and that was, that was the word that was used. Now, maybe it's, once you make so many changes to a public pool, you've got to bring it up to current standards for public facilities. I don't know. That's way outside of my lane. But at that time, I had heard, you know, it could be a million dollars to the county, it could, a million dollar ask to the county, a million dollar plus ask to the county. And that's just one of the, you know, one of the capital projects there. So, while I'm hesitant about the losing that field back there, because I know exactly the field you're talking about, we got to find a way to fund these things, and it's either coming from all the taxpayers, or you come up with an idea like this that helps to fund it.
Well, we just heard about it. Like, I just heard about it five minutes ago.
Well, to be fair, we've presented it a number of times.
Yeah.
It's been presented to the county in the past, and we were given at that time, come back to us. We're not asking you for money, and to be candid, if it's a hot potato item, it's okay if you move past it. It really is. It's going to be fine. The state is a partner in this. They recognize it, that if they take it back, which they do not want the park back, but I assure you, that's going to be quick in their response if they get it back to have to generate money off of it.
Well, Eric, I would tell you my reservations. Number one is the fact that it is a community park, and when you're talking about transient RV campers coming in, we have no idea who those people are. And they're going to be milling around with our local residents, and we really don't know what their history or their background is. Second thing is, we just heard from Metro forecasting today that Citrus County is kind of the RV capital of Florida. So that's number two. And saying that, why would government compete with private enterprise?
Because we need money to run the park.
Well, but our job as government, we shouldn't be competing with businesses. You've had Dr. Desai that's put a hotel in. We've got, you've got Eden RV Park down the road. I mean, we've got all these other things that are going on, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's government's place to be competing with private business.
The city doesn't have a single RV park within its city limits. The city has no RV park in its city limits.
Either way, I mean, as a community, I don't think that we should be competing with, with private enterprise. And, you know, this is going back, my previous term on the board, I thought this was a perfect place for an investment. I mean, we have one regulated ball field in this county, and that's bicentennial. And even back then, I was like, let's expand these ball fields so that we can get traveling teams and come through here. To me, that's real economic development. That's a real return on our investment, not putting a RV park in there, for goodness sakes. And I mean, we haven't, I know that we've been doing...
To be fair, in 2016, we brought that to you all to make that announcement.
Well, I wasn't here in 16. I brought it to you sometime between 11 and 14, but...
And in 2016, we presented that to you all as part of the redevelopment plans that included the Depot District, is a redevelopment of Whispering Pines Park. And it was not met with an acceptability, so you have to put yourself in our shoes. We can't predict that maybe a future commission's going to later say, well, now we want to do that, when they expressly said they had no interest in that at that time.
And the same here. This is the first time I've heard of an RV park. So I've been on the commission two years. It's the first time I've heard of the RV park. You know, and I, I don't know where it's at. I've heard, you know, the talk and the chatter about the expansion of the YMCA to this side of the county. I even thought the VA would have been a great fit for there, but I think if you could do a YMCA, do an agreement...
You can't build a YMCA or a VA clinic in that park because we don't own it. The state can't do it, because if the state does anything, they can't give the land to someone because it was all taken through Murphy Act property, and so it reverts back to the ownership of the federal government if they do that. We've explored many of these options through the years, and this is the most viable financial option to generate money out of Whispering Pines Park.
Well, it's my understanding that I guess we're contributing about $300,000 a year towards it, and I mean, frankly, I've never seen a financial sheet to see, what does it cost to operate that park? I don't know. I have no idea. I can tell you, I live at the end of 581 going across to Forest on 44, and the sign over there that says Whispering Pines is, I think it's been there probably since the beginning of the park.
It's actually in process of being replaced. We approved a bid out, a $300,000 gateway sign project to include all new signage inclusive of that one. I mean, I hear everything you're saying, but in the same respect, I think you have to hear what the city's saying. We've got a park that's not getting cheaper to run, and if what you're saying is you want us to come back and ask you all for an increase in funding to deal with some of these things, we'd be happy to look at that.
Well, again, I mean, I look at it, and I think if from a tourism, if you've asked them for money, that was one of the intentions of going after that additional penny was for capital. And frankly, I get, I, well, a little stressed over the fact that I feel like we go just to it every time, and I think getting that one penny in there, that's where we can do major projects like this, because it's a bond, it's a bonding payment, so that we can do big things. And I, you know, I think if we could, you know, family tourism is one of the best return on our investment, because it doesn't, it's not taking up a lot of public safety. You've got kids and families traveling around, and I, I don't know. I just, I don't think in this form with an RV campground, I don't think I can support it, so.
Yeah, we brought that concept to the TDC 18 months ago. You know, they, they looked at that as a, as a good fit for the competing interest of having the people that are there for tourism, for ball play, to also have a place with overnight stays. That's a very popular model throughout the nation. At that time, we weren't prepared to offer to them a capital project. Here's what it looks like, but they very much looked at wanting to be, be part of a funding mechanism for that. But if what the board is saying is that they don't support this approach, that's fully understandable. Should this not proceed with support from the state, then we would most certainly come back and, if what you're saying is to look at infused capital by way of TDC or general fund county dollars to help ameliorate and deal with some of these long-term circumstances, we can definitely do that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Speaking as the Chair of TDC, this was brought before us before, and it did, as I recall, was it an unanimous, warm response?
It was, yeah, it was a good, good concept.
Tell us more.
Yeah, tell us more kind of situation. And Dr. Desai sits on that board, and he
owns a hotel in Inverness. So y'all made a good case then, and I've had several phone calls and communications of people that are against this idea. I really don't want to be the RV capital of Florida. That being said, you're still making a good case. I think I went on record at the TDC meeting as saying this is, to Commissioner Bay's point, that one cent, that one, that one of the five pennies that we collect for tourist tax should not be just parceled out little by little. Certainly, there's some small, easy wins we can do with that money, but it's much nicer to, much like we do with our boat ramp fees, save up for something big that'll really make an impact on tourism and the, and our economy of tourism in the county. So I'm still, I'm still going to come down, I believe, in favor of this. However, I do have another question. How much is the, the travel ball, if we could get these up to travel ball standard fields, how many of those families do travel by RV? Do you have, you know, like, we're, I think we're all feeling a little bit of a lack of a full business case, and this kind of hit us at the last minute.
No, I understand, and so...
So, we don't want to put our, we want to support our partners, or, you know, our government partners, but we're suffering a little bit from a lack of present, full presentation here.
I understand. My brother calls me and tells me he's buying a certain car to see what I think, and I go, I don't know, you should buy it. I will tell you, I think that there is a percentage that's better than 25% of the people that come to that that would use that facility. One of the things we deal with now is when we have AAU tournaments, and we didn't for a long time. For a long time, we just had Little League, and we've really grown to bring in the travel ball, not just baseball, not just softball, but also some of the other leagues that do soccer, football, some of these other functions. And we now let people come in with their RVs just for the day, and we have to say, okay, park way over here, and they want it. It is something that they want. I do agree that RVs can be intrusive if they're not managed properly, but at the end of the day, it's a, it's an investment that's bringing back money in two directions for the county for, you know, one, you're getting overnight stay dollars.
Fed tax.
Yep, and then second, you're getting the notion of not having to deal with the inflationary costs of the park and potentially diminishing the amount that you pay into the park. This would also be the only facility that is connected to the state trail. There is no other connected RV park campground that's direct public access connected to the state trail. In terms of people and transients and things, people can come in and out of the park today, and we don't glean who they are. That's the nature of the beast when you have a public facility. So I would tell you that if what you would like to see is more numbers, we could do that and bring that to you. But again, today, if, no pressure. If you don't feel like it's something you can support, it's okay. We're not going to go back and say, man, they didn't support that. That's not what we're about.
I do have, if I still have the floor, I have one question on Railroad Street. I have absolutely no idea what you're talking about.
Okay, I'll go over that.
I've read it over and over again. You said improve, but you also said extend. I've got the Google Maps up in front of me. I don't understand where you would extend it.
Sure, I'll go over that. I wanted to take them in bites, the two things.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Still with the park, and Eric, you know that I'm a huge supporter of the city of Inverness. Always, always have been and lived there and love you guys. Don't love this idea, but in case this does go forward, my question to you is, you had mentioned with the widening of 41, and that would create a new access into the park there. With all these RVs going in that way, would you block off access where they couldn't drive out the current entrance of the park? Because I know that where it's hilly and goes windy and...
Yeah, we would, we would control the circulation to where the main entrance in and out of the park is off 41. And that project's going out to bid. I mean, it's not a, it's happening. This, the highway's already been designed for it at the light. If you look, there's already the, you can see where that rolling gate is. That's where that new entrance will be. That project will be out to bid in March, and most certainly, we have concerns about making sure that we address that cross-traffic can't just fly through the park and get out the other side. So we will definitely...
But they can get out the other side, is what you're saying.
They, traffic would be able to get out the other side, yes, but we would restrict it to where campground traffic or someone with a trailer could not. I'm not quite sure you could navigate that traffic circle in there with much of a trailer.
Agreed.
And generally, you have to remember, in the RV world, people aren't going to want to do that. RV, people that RV and drag campers around, they go to traffic lights. They do not want to go to uncontrolled intersections. It'll put the fear of God in them. It'll ruin a marriage.
Would there be tent camping also?
Absolutely, yeah. And there's actually a small tent campground in Whispering Pines today that was the very first facility in the park. But when that park was first inceptioned, the very first thing was camping.
Thank you.
Yep.
What is your specific legislative ask for this?
A total of $3 million with the city bringing $1 million to the table and $2 from the state.
And is that just for the campground?
That's just for the RV campground, correct.
And then what are you asking for rail, the railroad?
So railroad would be, in similarity, the same. Be the same. But we'll, I'll go over to Commissioner Davis's point. I want to go at them in pieces so that they weren't getting into a big circle conversation, you know?
Right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions I can talk about for Whispering Pines? Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir, ma'am, absolutely.
I've been RVing now for about 30 years, and the quality of the people in the, in these RVs are extraordinary. There's an organization called Good Sam's, which stands for Good Samaritans, and the reason they do that is because most everybody that you find in the RV world, they're Good Samaritans. They look out for each other. They care about one another, and they want to keep places clean, and so these are the experiences I've had. And trust me when I tell you, the expense of parking today in an RV park is really getting up there. So when we talk about the prices, we can get more people coming in to help support the park, so we can do things like the pool eventually. So the quality of the people should not be in question whatsoever. The amount of people shouldn't be in question because we've got more and more people coming all the time, and we advertise for manatees, and we get a tremendous amount of people go to that side of the county for the manatees. But everything that the city of Inverness does and what we're presenting to you has been researched to the nines. And so when we bring something to you, know that all the due diligence has been done. And while we appreciate your questioning of what's going on, which is really good, we want you to understand that we have done it, and we know what's going on, and we hope that you can appreciate that. And so if and when we have to come back to you, we hope that you've had some conversations regarding this. And I know that Ms. Davis has. And so I want you to strongly consider a positive outlook on this, because we will do it to the best that can be done. because we will do it to the best that can be done, okay?
So let me get to talk about Railroad Street, and I see that you have a map up there. So Railroad Street is, and, and I want to allay a couple of concerns that the gentleman brought up about the interaction with the state trail and the, and the paved perimeter trail and how it crosses the highway. You know, the state of Florida controls all that. This, the county commission or the city of Inverness has little to no influence as to how that happens. It's state property, it's a state trail. I don't like the fact that you have to cross the highway there to get onto the state trail. It's one of the reasons why when we saw that design, we started to promote the West Inverness Trail so that you could avoid having to do that. Because I, as the one gentleman spoke about, I have gone across it a number of times. And it is somewhat taking your life in your hands to go across the highway. And, and what he's speaking of is that they extended that paved trail along the perimeter of the park to the state trail. And in order to hit the state trail, instead of changing the grade where that side of the road hits the trail, they simply created a crosswalk across the new high, widened highway to where you then hook to the trail at grade, which is beyond not ideal. But it, it's not necessarily circumstance as to what would be going on with Railroad Street. The, the two things aren't one in the same, nor, nor do they cause one thing or the other. Railroad Street is a street that has been in the city's right-of-way, platted, dedicated right-of-ways, and at one time, fully built street to the highway for over a hundred years. What you see there, if you look at the top of that triangle where the school hits the trail, and then you see that white line, that is Railroad Street, and that is a right-of-way that goes all the way to 41 North. It was largely abandoned for the last half of it, which is where you see where the community of Windermere there, which is all those beautiful condos. And, and you'll see there's some houses to the left of that in those lands next to it. It was largely abandoned for unfortunate reasons, but there are houses back there and people that still use it. They are city streets. This is not something the city has to buy. This is not something the city has to seek, you know, certain approval to pave and, and construct. It is something that we're somewhat obligated to maintain to a readiness status. It is largely gone unneeded because the traffic on Turner Camp was not necessarily growing in, in size. But with the long, platted ago Wild Palms, which was platted back in the eighties and then changed again in the two thousands, you brought in another three to four hundred homes that are being built, and traffic is being added to there. I will tell you, the other effect is the widening of the highway itself has caused to close off. There is no longer five points that go between the highway and Turner Camp. That doesn't, that is no more. There is only one point that goes between the highway and Turner Camp north of the trail, which is a county facility, which is twin, partially twin lakes for about the distance from that wall to there is the cities. And the rest, it goes through a neighborhood street known as Jasmine, which is the county's facility. And that is being used today for some of the traffic to go around. But we are experiencing a large volume of traffic that is starting to come into the intersection of Zephyr Street and Ella, which is the only signaled intersection now for people wanting to come on and off of Turner Camp. And in order to deal with that, we have always maintained the railroad street right-of-way to not give, not vacate it, not say it's not needed, largely for two reasons. One, it was established long ago as a need to be able to connect these two roads. Secondly, the property that you see that's mostly undeveloped there, those property owners have a right to use it. It's a, it's a city road, it's a city street. So as much as people think that this is now a new thing, that it wasn't supposed to be, that, that is not factual. Windermere's side entrance, it's not their primary entrance, that is their side construction contractor entrance, is what intersects with Railroad Street. Their primary entrance is Turner Camp. Not that we don't see a need for them to use it, they most certainly should. It's a great asset for them to be able to go out to Railroad Street and go over to the trail. Many people buy in Windermere for that feature, it's a, it's a beautiful community for that. And the city would never go in and just do Railroad Street without considerations for sidewalks, without considerations for the proper pedestrian crossings, traffic calming, we wouldn't do that. That's not the goal here. But we do need some level of relief north of that trail for traffic to be able to circulate without needing to come to a very congested intersection at Ella and Zephyr. And that situation's not going to get better. We have looked at this with our engineers, we've looked at it in concert with the state. It is something that at some point in time will need to happen. This is not going to happen immediately. I would tell you Railroad Street largely wouldn't even begin to take shape until they actually widen the highway north of the bridge and rebuild the bridge, which is probably years out. But the conversation has to start taking place. We have to start being able to discuss with them, you know, the cause and effect of certain things and where we shouldn't just burden the local tax base with impacts from state projects. Because there's a lot of impact from this from the state. They're very good partners with us. They are very much looking at this like we understand that something needs to be done. Your support of this would, would mean a lot in terms of the understanding that growth that is happening, not only in the incorporated, but in the unincorporated portion of the county on a one road. Turner Camp is the only way in and out. There is no other roads that, that go out to that portion of the county. Would, would be very important, I think, to speaking about everything that we ask of the state. We all ask of the state to have better transportation networks. We all ask of the state to have better pedestrian connectivity. We all ask of the state to not have traffic, just go unchecked. We want to be ahead of the issue. It's not something that we look at happening in immediacy, but it is something that we need to have a conversation about and start looking at from a financial standpoint, making sure that it doesn't get lost as they widen the highway and give it no consideration.
Eric, has this been discussed at the NPO?
This particular road probably has not, no. No, probably has not.
Commissioner Davis.
Great information. Needed to start with the basics first.
Okay, I apologize.
Which you still flew, you still flew by because you, you've lived this project, and I'm still trying to catch up. Thanks to Google Street View, I think I have now figured it out. It's fully paved from East Turner Camp to Ella, but you want to, it's a, well, our land development division calls a paper road between Ella and 41, is that correct?
It is a paper road. It was a.
It's a dirt track.
It was a functioning road. And unfortunately, due to a lot of bad politics back in the day, it was allowed to be abandoned slash not maintained.
It looks like a dirt track on Google Street View.
For most of it now, yes, and it is, it is, but there are homes and property back there that.
Is that your extension that you listed in the letter?
The extension would be the pavement from where pavement stops in Ernest to the highway, yes.
Okay, and then obviously some sort of onboarding onto 41 because the trail goes under. So this would be at a different grade and connect to 41?
And so what we've discussed with the state is, whereas our right-of-way touches their highway now, and we could effectively connect to it in that way, that's not the most intelligent way to connect to it. It would need to utilize some of their design and what they want to do and actually probably connect just slightly north as it starts to parallel the highway up there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely, great question.
Commissioner Finnegan.
I don't sit on the school board, so, but I'm just curious. The, the two green boxes, that's the farm animals, right, for the middle school by the trail?
Those are tennis courts.
Oh, those are tennis courts? Because I thought the farm animals butted up against the, the trail.
They, they do.
My curiosity was when that gets connected, because I know part of it is paved, because I'm familiar with the traffic out there, obviously built the building out there. Are you, would the school at some point be allowed to cross the trail to get to that road to alleviate some of that?
So that would be something that the school would need to try and, and work out. That is not part of what our concept is here. I, I will tell you what Mr. Thorpe said is absolutely correct. The school will, will deal with their parking circumstances on their property, and they need to, and they're aware of that. We've spent a number of years working with them to bring awareness and to bring about plans for the future there. The city has not been heavy-handed in trying to be a good partner with the school as parents have used the right-of-way of Turner Camp to park, but that can't continue. Part of any traffic situation is less traffic getting to the situation. And whereas the primary focus of this is not the schools, there is a secondary effect where any school that can have traffic circulate around it and not through its regular traffic would be better. This would keep traffic from entering a school zone. Ergo, it, it makes it better for them. But it is not designed to solve their parking problem whatsoever, that, that is not the case.
Understood, thank you. Eric, can you address the, how, the affordable housing issue that was their concerns?
I have no idea what that is. I, I, the city doesn't know of any plans for attainable or affordable housing to be back there. That could be something that's generating from maybe Realtor or something, but we don't have any plans and have anything in our development department dealing with that in that area. So I, I can't speak to that because I'm not aware of it. That, what you see there today with those red lines is what, what's platted and entitled. Beyond that, there's nothing platted and entitled.
Commissioner Barrett.
When I look at this, the road stops, it goes a little bit north and it stops. That's as far as you want to get money to pay for. In other words, you're just asking for the, for the funds from the, where it stops to where that little thing is, it just goes. Okay, so that means you're not going to get to 41 until a later date? And that's going to be another ask from the state for money to get to 41?
No, we would, we would not do the project in parts, we would do it all at once. And so, so here's the thing, when you deal with the state highways in the Florida Department of Transportation, it's a long game process, okay? I think County Road 491 speaks eloquently to the long game process and dealing with the state. That's just what it is, it's not a good thing, it's not a bad thing. It's also an expensive thing. When you interact a connection point to the state highway system, you have to do very specific things. And the state will want it to be designed to their standards, which is different than what our standards are in the city because we don't build SIS-level highways. They would need to fund, and largely the funding that they're bringing to the table realistically deals with mostly their connection to the highway. It's very expensive to, to do that.
But you're still going to fund one section with the one ask, and you're going to have to fund?
No, this would, the one, the ask that we're bringing forward would do the whole project.
Even though you don't have it like on here as to where it's going to go to onto 41?
Right, I wouldn't want to be, today, we could connect to 41, it does. You can see the white line brings it to the edge of their right-of-way, which effectively we could say, okay, we're connected. But in being a good partner with the state, they're going to want to make that look different than that. And it would be presumptuous of us to go out and say, well, this is how it should look. Because it's on their property, on their right-of-way at that point.
Okay, when it comes to parking with the schools, the, every school in the county, as, as far as I know, has a backup of people parked on the road that take up a lane. I mean, if you go to Forest Ridge, they even put the little cones up for almost half a mile. Goes from almost pub, publics down to the school, and it's all the time. So the thing is, that you're not going to stop.
This is a little different than that, just to be fair. This is not the school-managed traffic, this is an anomalous deal with what they call, it's not even managed parent pickup. This is, these are middle schoolers, and these things that I, I can't even believe we all have these things. These things everybody has. And they call their parents and say, I don't want to wait in the line. And naturally, the parents don't want to wait in the line, and they say, why don't you walk out to Turner Camp and pick me up? And they all park on the edge. And it's not a managed situation by school. I agree with you that there is a lot of managed situation with cones and other things of that nature. But this is not that situation.
This is, I can't imagine anything, our, ours is bad enough on Citrus, West Citrus Springs Boulevard and over on Century Lane and the other schools that I've passed, but they don't, they don't put out the cones.
No, because this isn't school sanctioned, this isn't part of what they're, if you ask the school system about this, they, they, it is the parents making this conscious decision. It's not the school saying this is what you should do to pick up your child.
Okay, then there's nothing you can do when, you know, to control it?
There is most certainly something we could do to control it, and you, the phones would be ringing. I'm sure your phone would be ringing, along with the school's phones. Yes, there is most certainly something that can be done to control it.
So like the police department couldn't tell them to move on?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, we could.
So we, we could work with the county, your, your city could work with the county sheriff?
We could have them.
And alleviate that.
We could call it the Janet Barak Act, we could go out there this afternoon. And I assure you, as the sun comes up tomorrow, if that's the direction I'm giving, you can bet that's going to happen. But I can tell you from a public policy standpoint, in this line of work that, that we've all been in, I've been a long time, and you're venturing into, there are some times that you have to make decisions that, that are just about as clear as mud. And going out there heavy-handed just because we can do something is not always the best thing. Partnering together, in which we have with the school system, is, is a, is a much better approach. Now, they have a lot of heavy lifting to do on their end to make that happen. But as much as we can help, you know, bringing less traffic into that school zone, whether people are parked there or not is a good thing. And that's the goal of Railroad Street.
Do we have to agree to both of your things, or can we take them individually, like?
You can take them individually.
But the RV, I'm sort of against.
You, you, you can do one.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna take, we're gonna go to the, to the vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we approve item E9 and support these, these two city initiatives. And I want to give an explanation why, and I hope that the board comes along and agrees. Both of these things, while they're city initiatives, will have long-lasting effects on county residents. Should the, should the city fail to garner state support or even county support to put this RV park in there, make no mistake, the cost of supporting that park is going up. It is going to raise taxes for all county residents just to do our part to help support that park. The folks in Floral City, the folks in Chaz, the folks in Sugar Mill Woods, in Terra Vista, their, their taxes are going up to continue to support this park. What we have in front of us is that a local government has come up with two initiatives to be able to address these issues. While there may not be any feel-good to either one of them, and both of them are going to have their adversaries, it's a solution to keep those expenses of Whispering Pines Park off the taxpayers' backs. And the second part of this is forward-thinking in terms of moving traffic through the city, out to 41, exactly the forward, the type of forward-thinking we talked about this morning in our strategic planning. Thinking ahead, figuring out how to, how to come up with a solution and solve these problems before they land right square in your lap, and you've got traffic backed up down Turner Camp, traffic backed up into these neighborhoods and so forth. So I applaud the city, I, I understand that, that there's folks that don't want either one of these things. I understand we've got board members who aren't excited about either one of these things. But they are very good initiatives that solve, that solve problems, both for the city and for county residents.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Canard and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further board comment?
Well, I hate to say it like this, because I do applaud the city for their efforts. I don't love the RV park. That being said, if the board felt supportive of this motion, it would certainly not be a one vote so that, you know, to, to put a wrinkle in with the state. So I don't know how to see where everybody is with that. I feel like now that, if we, if we, you're doing what you're doing anyway. You're just looking, you know, for, for a full community blessing, I assume. You're going to the state, you're asking for the money no matter what.
This is going to go to the state. And one, one initiative, because the relationship between the county and the city had not been good for a lot of years. And, and in the last five years, it really want that to be better, want to bring these things and, and have a conversation. None of this conversation is bad, by the way. And it's a privilege to have these folks come to your meeting from the city and, and bring forward their concerns and thoughts. It really is. You know, I say we got the best residents. I mean, they took time out of their day to come here and speak to that. So I think if there's a, a big concern to the point, don't just agree to it for the sake of it. You know, if you don't believe in it, I would tell you to, definitely, you can let that pass into the night, and we're going to take, you know, the other one, but we're going to both move them forward. And any letter of support you can offer, it'd be great. But if not, it's not something that's going to be held against or looked at like, oh, man, we're back to 2013, 14, you know?
I don't see that happening, and I always appreciate, we always have candid conversations, Eric. And I know all the good work you're doing over there.
Well, I've got a great team around me, I really do.
Yes, you do.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrett.
I like the road part, I really do, but I really can't, it, it, the RV, it just doesn't sit right with me at this point. I'd like to see us do a motion on the one, on the what road, and give you full support. And then, you know, see how the other members feel about the RV park. But I really couldn't support the RV park.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. So I, I, I'm in tandem with the commissioners on each side of me, so I can support the road, I just can't. road, I just can't support the RV park. So I'll call the question. Public input? Oh, I'm sorry, public input. Thank you.
I agree. I I really think that they should be separate. You should vote on them separately so we can get to see where the commissioners stand on each each of the issues. Thank you.
Chair.
I'm sorry, sir, can we get your name and address for the record? Sorry.
Stephen Santa Fe. I live at Pritchett Island in Inverness.
Thank you.
Lived there for over thirty-five years.
Thank you. Next, please.
Deborah Spence, Crystal River. I am an RV-er. I've been RVing for twelve years in this community. I started staying here until I bought my house down here. When you talk about, there's a difference between the state parks and the new resorts that are being built. The resorts that are being built are not really great for families. We have a lot of families out there that are RVing and homeschooling their kids. What an idea was to put them into nature, which Bain RP Parks don't do right now. You look at the new ones with Sweet Citrus and everything else, some of those rates can go up to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five dollars a night. The state doesn't do that. So you're providing kind of a low cost camping experience. Although the people come and go a lot, as was mentioned previously, we are a helpful community. We get involved where we are. When I have traveled to different areas, at New Orleans, I helped with Habitat for Humanity to help build houses. Going out to California, we've helped with various charities out there. That's what people, that's what RV-ers want to do. You have a wonderful area here. We have so much on the Crystal Riverside and we keep building up tourism there. But what about tourism here? What about tourism out by Floral City to kind of show that that's a whole different environment? The state park that we have down in Rainbow Rainbow River? Rainbow Springs in Donellen. It's a very, very different type of rustic camp. And I assume that this is on the same wavelength of that. It's just a whole different experience and you'd be giving people who don't have a lot of money the opportunity to come to Crystal River where they don't have that opportunity now. Thank you.
Short and sweet.
Name, please.
Oh, Ron Thorpe. I was up before, you guys remember me, okay? Shortest guy in the room, probably. Anyway, this is a solution hunting for a problem when you're talking about Railroad Street. I'm telling you, there's already five streets through. Number of streets did not get reduced because of the forty-one construction. To use an emergency evacuation to say this has to be done with Railroad Street. I got out this morning in my truck and I drove from Jasmine to Railroad is eight tenths of a mile. I ride the trail on my bike. It's four, six tenths of a mile from Turner Camp when you get on the trail to forty-one. And guess what? It's a half mile back out to where Jasmine comes in. So it's an emergency, we got to help you evacuate, but you got to drive two point three miles further. Spend a million plus to do something that's not needed? Again, I think it's a solution looking for a problem. And I respectfully say that I think these issues should be separated instead of being voted together as one issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Kuiper. I have lived here since nineteen eighty-eight and I've watched this town just boom. And I would just like the board to keep in mind that we are supposed to be small town done right. I mean, we spout off about that at every turn. And I think the RV park and a lot of the progress that's going on is going to keep us from being that small town that we all love.
My name is Alan Lewis. I spoke earlier. And we residents of Inverness or of Windermere have not been told about this, even though the city has been planning this. And I I I think a lot of people haven't understood really the map. If you look at the map that's in front of you and you, the yellow line on the right is Turner Camp Road. And then the white line with the small, thin, red lines on either side, that is Railroad Street, which abuts Windermere. And it is paved only to the end of where Windermere houses are located. So approximately half of the length, which goes from the yellow line to where it abruptly ends at the orange line, the orange line being Route forty-one. Now, if you've been on the the trail, you'll see that forty-one, the reason there's an overpass is that it's about fifteen feet higher than Railroad Street or where Railroad Street would go through. So how are we going to go from one level to the other level? There's nothing in what's been presented to you indicating how that is to take place. Okay? It it's like, here's the trail going down here and forty-one is way up there on the second floor. How are the people supposedly during this hurricane supposed to get up and navigate that? Well, it can be figured out, but what are they going to do? Put in a a a rotary or or something? I mean, this just doesn't make any sense the way it has been drawn at this point. And what they're telling you is that, well, the state will figure it out and how to do it. Well, that's ridiculous. Let the city come along and tell you how it's going to be done, figure out how it's going to be done and then ask for your support.
Thank you.
And going back to the impact statement, we need that as well.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else to speak? Seen, oh.
I can address that issue. The state's actually lowering the bridge as part of the highway widening project and bringing it just similar to the crossing that they have in in the north end of forty-one, where the trail goes under and it's no longer, they don't no longer, they no longer need that highway bridge. So the grade's being lowered as part of the highway project.
What, wait, wait, you've already, I'm sorry. You guys can talk out in the. It doesn't work that way, sir. If you'd like to come forward and speak.
Excuse me, we'll play Speaker Roulette. I I just want to reiterate, I would hope that worst case scenario that you could table this until you had a a bit more time to look into this. I think it's hit all of us by surprise. And I think you would be well advised to go on the trail, look at what we're dealing with, and then you'll have a better idea of how this is going to be an adverse effect on people in Windermere, people in the city, and particularly with people who travel here to ride or walk on the trail, many with their with their pets. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair. Yes. For the record, can I please get his name? Sir, can we get your name again for the record? I apologize.
Richard Fossat.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Once again, I want to preface what we're doing here. This is the City of Inverness's legislative request ask to the state. The difference between what I I think conceptionally, we have some burden into the park, which we fund. The county really has nothing on the roadside of it, other than to support their legislative request. So again, I, if you want to leave them as one, or do you want to break them out because I think they're going to fall off? Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Davis.
For those in the audience that may not be aware of this, it's not just Railroad Street funding on their letter for the legislative request, and it's not just that and the RV park. It's septic sewer grant funding, it's water quality, water supply, stormwater structures, it's Highway US forty-one North and State Road two hundred from Inverness to Marion County, it's affordable housing assistance, multi multimodal transportation and bicycle connectivity funding, public safety, protection of home rule, which is, we're all a big fan of home rule, and less state preemption. So we can't really, to my mind, separate these out. This is a separate government. Dave decided that this is our legislative request. We're the county government, we can either lend our voice to that or not.
That's not our agenda item, though. Our agenda item is specifically for the Railroad Street and the RV campground.
Well, the backup, then the backup's a little in conflict because it lists all the other things that went to Representative Gro and Senator Angolia. So to my mind, it seems awkward. We either lend our voice or not. They very kindly said that it's okay. We don't have to fall.
Eric, would you like to address that?
Yes, and and to Commissioner Davis's point, the confusing piece is there's only two direct appropriation asks in that letter, which is the Railroad Street and the the RV Park Campground in Whispering Pines. So whereas I think in generalities in the rest of that letter, I would tell you, we all agree in concept and theology and philosophy, the the two things that we would seek an actual letter for would would be the Railroad Street or the RV Campground and or. The others are are something that I think generally we want to put forth each year. I think we all agree on that.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion on the floor in a second. If the motion fails, then can we come back with the second one? Yes. Okay, fine. All right, I'm going to call a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was that just two? So all opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Nay, whatever you want to call it.
Could we just stick with nay? Because when you are a little delayed on voting, it's very confusing when an aye is a nay. So please, make it a little clearer.
So the motion fails, two to three.
Madam Chair? I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we we approve E nine two, the legislative request funding for extension of Railroad Street in the City of Inverness, that we sign a letter as a county board saying we support that initiative.
So I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Barrett, support, making a letter of support for railroad, road. My tongue's tired. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment?
Third time. Ron Thorpe. I don't see the problem with taking a deep breath. Getting some more information because you can never have too much information. But to lump these two diverse things, items into one motion.
We just separated them.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? My wife and I had a ten year discussion about wearing hearing aids and she won, but I rushed out of the house today without putting them on. So don't tell her, please, because I embarrassed myself. Okay, then I make a jackass fool out of myself. If you've separated, I appreciate it. Again, I strongly.
We did, we separated them. All right.
I won't come back, I don't think.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to close. Oh, oh, he's packed.
Still, Richard Fossat.
This issue has obviously struck some nerves. I think everybody seems to be a little confused about exactly what's going on. At the very least, I would ask that you postpone what you're about to do so that you can get more information and be more comfortable with how you vote either way that you decide to vote. But I think we all need more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, uh, Chairman, Madam Chairman. I just want to reiterate what you have stated in the microphone because I know some people forgot their hearing aids at home, he says. For Railroad Street, the county, it's it's not the county's deal. So the city will move ahead with that as the city wishes. We're just recognizing that that's their legislative ask. The difference, as our Madam Chairman Bays had said, is the park, we have a vested interest in that. That's why we, you know, debated that issue a little bit more. So your thoughts and concerns, I'm sure, have been heard by the City of Inverness and I'm, you know, I'm sure that they're still listening, but we're just acknowledging that this is their legislative ask.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, I call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Chair. Clarification of that motion? I was trying to catch you, I'm sorry. The railroad, road? It's railroad.
Railroad Street.
Street.
Okay. Thank you. All right, somebody want to make a motion on the second? On the, on the RV?
We can just ignore it, right?
Can we ignore the RV or do we have to, do we have to vote on it?
Well, we kind of just did and it got. I think by by not addressing it in your motion, you have said you're not, I mean, you're not agreeing to support that one.
Thank you. Yay. All right, we're moving on. Outstanding commission items.
We went over these this morning. If you want us to do it again, but.
Nope, we're fine, unless somebody else.
Well, I will bring them back and update at the next meeting.
We're going to move right on to you, Mr. Howard. Talk us off the cliff.
Just appreciate everybody today with Strategic Planning Retreat. We're excited about moving the county forward together collectively. We'll bring back some timelines for you at a later date.
Thank you very much. All right, we're on to Advisory Board nominations and appointments.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I got down here first.
Like to nominate Richard Barnes to be reappointed as a regular member, Robert Bass to be reappointed as an alternate, Stuart Bozeman to be a regular member, and Jeanette Collins to be a regular member.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, is there?
Yep, okay, you got it? Sorry. You forgot a few times today. Forrest Stewart's been sitting out there the whole time.
Is there any public comment? Stuart, where are you? Don't you want to say anything? All right. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. I two aviation board nominations.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Pull this up. Aviation Advisory Board, no, that's Citizen, sorry. Motion to approve, I'm sorry, I'm having problems with accessing the current.
Do you like my backup?
Did it, seriously, the clerk site is not working very well right now, so I had to download all the backup and then try to find it. I find it now, okay. Would like to make a motion to reappoint Mark Klingel and Heiko Kolumbach and add Kenneth Jaquith to the Aviation Advisory Board.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis. Are there any more? Okay. Do you want to, do you have any, did you want to see?
You want me to say something?
Nope, I was.
I want to say something. I agree with you on the reappointments. The one member position, Mr. Crippen had reached out by an email and when I saw his vast experience, and again, I wish some. and when I saw his vast experience, and again, I wish sometimes we could meet with everyone face-to-face, he seemed to have the most experience even running an own business with chartering and school. And I just thought that would be a great asset on that board. So, I would have done similar to you, Commissioner Davis, but I feel like Patrick A. Crippen should be appointed, just experience.
Do you want to nominate him?
Madam Chair, I'll rescind my second.
May I?
Commissioner Davis.
You bring up a good point, that we had three quality, pardon?
Sorry, there's no motion on the floor at this point because there's no second.
I'll make a motion. Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate to the Aviation Advisory Board, reappoint Mark Klingel, reappoint Heiko Kolumback, and nominate Patrick A. Crippen for the member position.
You can still take nominations, though. We can still take nominations if there's a reason to do it.
I can go ahead and, okay, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Mark Klingel, Heiko Kolumback, and Kenneth Jaquith. And I would, at some point, whenever it's appropriate to do so, state my reasons why.
Is there? Okay, is there any further nominations? Seeing none, I want to close nominations, right? And ask for a second? Is there a second?
This is getting a little messy.
I don't think there's a second for Mr. Jaquith, is the way that I'm seeing the board.
Correct.
So, you don't put all the nominations out and then cease the nominations and then pick?
You all do things differently at different times. At this time, it sounded like there was a motion and a second rather than making nominations because Commissioner Finnegan made a motion and there was a second for a motion. So, you're kind of doing a hybrid. So, I don't know how to answer you.
Take us off the ledge, then.
It sounds to me like you have nominations for the two existing, and you have a nomination for Mr. Crippen. It doesn't sound like you have a nomination for Mr. Jaquith.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but that's the way I'm hearing it.
Chair.
Yes.
I concur.
It's clear as mud right now. What's that?
I concur. The same thing.
So, right now, we have a motion for the two to be renominated, and we have a motion for Patrick Crippen to be the, as a nomination for the additional.
Correct, that was made by Finnegan and seconded by Barrett.
Cannard, yes.
That was Barrett.
Oh, okay. So, you haven't got that and screwed up a second time. So, then if I have somebody that wants to talk about the other person? Yes, no?
If they can convince somebody else to support it, or you can throw out the whole process.
My understanding would be that we would have dealt with the first motion, and I can speak on that. Okay, so the first motion was a little too quickly rescinded the second. I'm sorry, Commissioner Cannard did that. Typically, I believe, we would deal with that first motion. It'll either fail or succeed. And then if it fails, then we go on to nominate another slate. Is my understanding of doing this.
We didn't technically have a second.
Pardon?
I think the first one, we didn't technically have a second.
We did, but he rescinded it. But it doesn't matter. I can speak on Commissioner Finnegan's nomination to say what I never got an opportunity to say, which is why I, who have had thirty-five years, half of that experience has been in business aviation, business and general aviation. I don't know if y'all realize that my business does a lot of work in aviation over the years. Not only that, I was raised at the airport. I know all three of these men personally. I think all three are fine candidates. There is a reason that I went with Ken Jaquith. I believe that he is the strongest advocate for where we are right now in building out the two airports. So, as Commissioner Cannard said earlier, so far out of your lane, something like that. This is my lane, guys, just saying. So, piece being said, Barry Simons has the lowest number of ratings and the lowest experience as a pilot, but also is the strongest advocate for GA. But I think he's also good. And of course, I'm very, very well familiar. I went to high school with Pat Crippen, and he trained at my father's school. Ken Jaquith is still what I would suggest, who I would suggest would be the right person to add to the board at this time. And I like all three personally, so.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Barrett. Have I done open to the public?
No, ma'am.
Is there anybody that would wish to address the public or the open to the public, whatever it is at this point? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay, on principle.
Four one. Aye, three, Citrus Springs Advisory Council nomination.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Vince Mickelson and Tyler Thompson.
We have a motion on the floor for Vince Mickelson and Tyler Thompson.
I'll second. I trust the district commissioner.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries five zero. Aye, four, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee nominate in point five positions for membership. All right, I'll jump out. I'll nominate Bruce Kaufman. Oh, I guess we're gonna nominate them all.
Yeah.
All right.
Willie White.
Okay, you guys got me again.
Five positions, five names.
All right, we're gonna nominate them all. I feel like it's Friday or something, I don't know. All right. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Commissioner Davis, you got some great news earlier today, so.
Is that sarcasm, Paul? I have good news and I have bad news. I'll start off with the bad news. Seminole County and Lake County both voted to depart the Medical Examiner Districts Five and Twenty-Three, and it is because they perceive it to be not fair the way we apportion cost by population. I think they have a point. I think that they have gone to a nuclear option where this could have been handled differently. And it is an extraordinary waste of taxpayer money, this road that we're going down. So, I find that highly unfortunate, but I got my marching orders, and I will fight the good fight for Citrus County at our next board meeting.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just, I think you misspoke. It's Seminole is already in District Twenty-four, and Lake voted to leave District Five and join Seminole in District Twenty-four. I think you said Twenty-three.
Yeah, I did, my apologies. What she said, for the record, Madam Clerk. On a lighter note, Florida Association of Counties, I was just asked to serve in a select committee that's invitation-only for leadership and governance for Florida Association of Counties. Fairly big deal. I want to say there's six or eight commissioners that have been asked to serve along with Chair and Vice Chair of that committee. So, just got that news today, and I said yay. It's a follow-on to their Strategic Planning Committee. I was not on their radar enough when the Strategic Planning Committee went through last year, but now this is the follow-on to strategic planning. So, I'm super happy to be, really honored to be invited to that, so.
Congratulations, well done.
Thank you.
Madam Attorney, can you just do a little follow-up before? I think we briefly discussed it, just so that the board understands what this means, that Marion County owns the facility in Lake County, but Lake County is now departing. Is that kind of accurate, or wanting to leave?
So, basically, what Seminole and Lake have, each now voted for, is to enter into a separate interlocal agreement between those two counties to provide their medical examiner services. There is a structure in Lake County that, under the six-county interlocal agreement, which included Seminole and then the five counties within the Fifth Circuit, Fifth Judicial Circuit, there was a building in Lake County that was, is serving those six counties. As part of that interlocal, Lake transferred that structure, facility, to Marion County. So, there's a deed which currently exists. There is some disagreement as to the interpretation of the language of that deed as to whether or not that property will remain with Marion County or whether it will revert back to Lake County. We had a call of the six attorneys on Friday, and we're still kind of digesting where we go from here with the lawyers. So, basically, right now, the next step for Lake and Seminole is to go before the Medical Examiner's Commission, which is a body of appointed officials, appointed by the governor. They go before them on February Fourth to ask that entity, that commission, to allow Lake County to leave the Fifth Circuit and join the Twenty-Fourth Circuit. So, that body will have their meeting on the Fourth, and we need to, among the counties, decide how that February Fourth meeting is gonna be handled in terms of, you know, whether anyone's gonna speak at that commission or give input to that commission. So, so far, that commission has documentation from Seminole County, and now I presume that Lake County, now that Lake County voted this morning to join them, probably will get input from Lake County. So, the other four counties of the Fifth will have to decide how they're gonna respond. And I don't, at this point, have any direction to offer you or suggestions to offer you, and it's not on our agenda today. But that's where we are, that's the status.
But the convoluted part of that is the Tallahassee Board, the Medical Examiner for one of those counties, Seminole?
So, Dr. Wolf is currently our Medical Examiner, and she serves for the six counties that currently make up our interlocal agreement. From what I understand, she has recently been appointed by the governor to also be the Medical Examiner for the Twenty-Fourth Circuit, or the Twenty-Fourth District, which is just Seminole. So, and she serves as the chairman of that board. So, Dr. Wolf, from what I have been told, has said she believes that she can serve both the Fifth and the Twenty-Fourth. But the decision on the Fourth, she will be the chairman of that commission. So, we're not quite sure how that is all going to play out.
No conflict of interest. Okay.
That issue was raised, the issue of a conflict was raised during the attorney call on Friday.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, one other thing. I'll provide you all a list of the appointees on that commission sometime tomorrow, as soon as we get done with this meeting. Maybe some of you may know some of those folks.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cannard?
Nothing.
Commissioner Barrett?
I went to a meeting with Commissioner Cannard. I went to a meeting with Commissioner Cannard at the Water District, and I am learning. So, I will not report at this time, but I am learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
I had the honor of attending the Veterans Advisory Board last week, and regrettably, in all my paperwork, the numbers and figures I wanted to share got shuffled out. I can bring them back, our 2004 numbers, at another meeting. But what I took away from that and what you would take away from that with the numbers that were presented, to reiterate what our honored guest, Major McGee, had said today, was that our veteran service officer and the team that works for the county are absolutely remarkable, and they are doing such a fine job in this county. And the number of veterans that we serve here and the amount of income that they bring here, I believe it's well over a hundred million dollars to the county, whether it's their retirements or health services that the VA brings here. It's really remarkable what the veterans do for our community. So, I'm pleased to be on that board and look forward to bringing all the great things that we're doing on behalf of our veterans to you. So, thank you.
Thank you. County Attorney Lynn, do you have anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right. Last open to the public. Don't rush. All right. Seeing none. Man, it's three eighteen. We're going to adjourn. Run.